All right, at 6:30 we'll call the meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you do the roll call, Paul?
Megan, Brian, Brooks, Rob, Alyssa, Michael, Barb.
Here. Okay, we've got a quorum. We'll get started. We have some comments on the agenda. I believe Alyssa had some corrections, correct?
Not for the agenda.
Oh, for the minutes, sorry. Okay. Do we have an approval for the agenda then?
So moved.
Second, Heidbrink.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Okay, Alyssa, take over on the minutes. Put your mic on, please.
I have four things for the agenda. In the consent calendar it says it contains the following item, but there are three items listed, so I think it's a typo. Just add an S to the word items, please. The second thing, we denied the conditional use permit. And I feel that we should say why we denied it. It's not in that paragraph.
Some minutes, I looked back and some say, some don't. Up to you all. If you wanted to say, then we can go back and find.
Personally, I would like them all to say.
Okay. We will go back and listen and input the reason based on what you said and what you were calling.
Yes, yes, please.
And maybe when we do the motion, and I think you did say that in the motion, why you felt that. I think that would be appropriate.
I think it's important for when people go back in years to come and go back and look. It's there. Next, for the TIF, for the Tax Increment District, it doesn't say where it's located. I would like it to say where in town it would be located, or the name of the neighborhood, or the name of the development. It just says City of Brandon. Okay? And the last one, the variance application. And we approved it. The paragraph does not say what hardship we identified. I would like it to.
Is everybody else on the commission comfortable with those suggestions in our future minutes? Okay? So are you mending or approving them?
I will. I move to approve the minutes with those changes.
Heidbrink, second.
Rob, I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't look over at you. Are you okay with making those comments? Okay, all right. All right, so we've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes with the corrections discussed earlier. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving. So this is a time for public comments. If you're here for something specifically on the agenda, we would ask you to wait and come forward at that time. But if you're here for just something that you have concerns about, we would ask you to come to the lectern and give us your name and address, and we have a five-minute limit. Does anybody here have something that is not on the agenda? Okay. We're going to move on then to the new business. We've got, under new business, home occupational permit application for Meadowlark Circle.
So this is an application submitted. It requires a conditional use permit because it is a home occupation. Yesterday, we received two, I believe it was yesterday, yes. Yesterday, we received two email comments from members of the public, presumably members of the, in the area that got the 300 feet notices. Copies are in the back if you wanted to see them ahead of time. They're back there. So at this point, we will turn it over to the applicant to explain their business and everything happening.
Hi, so if you just push that little purple button there, yep, and give us your name and address, and that would be great, and then just tell us your idea.
I'm Patricia Belanger, and I live at 420 East Meadowlark Circle, and this is my husband Frank.
So would you just like to tell us what you're interested in doing at your home?
Okay. You'll have to excuse me, guys. I'm having some very bad stomach issues today. I was at urgent care. I'm not feeling my best. My husband's going to talk a little bit for me because I'm just a little bit queasy in my stomach.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so we moved here from Boulder in December of last year, and we had a business there that we ran for 14 years out of our home. And it was in an unincorporated county, so all we needed was really federal and state approval. So when we came here, we didn't know there was a local thing that we had to do. So we did an event with the Boulder Chamber, with the Brandon Chamber, and it was at our house. And so it involved people coming over, a lot of people.
Not to interrupt. Can you move the mic just a little bit closer?
Sure, sure. And so it involved a lot of people coming over to the house, and I think that's addressed in here on the thing. So our model is basically makeovers for professional women. So they come in here and get a full wardrobe change. It's not, no one can come to the house and knock on the door and come in. There's no signs. It's individual makeover, so one person at a time. And what my wife does is she does a lot of networking, so she's joined the groups here as well, like the Chamber, who paid us to host this event because a lot of people were interested in seeing our home, and they wanted to introduce us to the community. So that's what happened there. We have no intentions of doing any additional shows, so there's not going to be multiple cars out there, block traffic. And so when we have somebody come in, and so we did have, in the second quarter of this year, we had five people that came in and did makeovers, and they all paid. And I submitted the tax to the state, so tax funds would have come into Brandon. And so that's basically the intent. So it's like selling insurance out of the house. It's just her expertise as a stylist to help professional women, both in their jobs and in their personal lives.
And it is one-on-one. I only see one person at a time, so, and I have to know that person. Somebody cannot just off the street knock on our door and come in. This is a very specialized, it's a service that we offer to women.
So the other thing is, when we came here, it's like we're closing this down. So we have no intention of keeping this going for a long time. We came here to retire, really. And so we have some inventory that we want to liquidate. That's what she's doing, and she's providing the service to the people to do that.
So I can retire.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So first question is, how long are your sessions? And my second question is, what products are you selling? You mentioned liquidating some inventory. So just an approximate quantity of what a person may purchase during a session.
Based on what we've been doing so far, usually two to three hours is usually the session. Sometimes four hours, but we usually start by having coffee before we start because I like to know the client. And then it's whatever I find for them. Maybe I'll find them, like, usually I start with a bra. I find them a bra, and then I just find whatever works on that woman. Maybe a top, a jacket, a skirt. The number of items can be anywhere from five to maybe 15 items, maybe 20 items if I find a pair of shoes, or if I find a purse. I'm putting a wardrobe together for a woman, and that's basically what we've been doing for 14 years. And that's what we did over the four or five clients that we saw since we've been here. And there's not an issue with parking. I mean, we have four spots, and they can park in one of those four spots. But it's a one-on-one. There's not multiple cars at our house.
Does that mean you have a variety of jackets at your house in different sizes? And a variety of shoes at your house in different sizes?
It's our inventory that's left over from when we were in Boulder. When we, we didn't know this was going to happen. The house sold and closed very quickly. So we really, we would have rather just liquidated everything in Boulder, but there wasn't time. So we brought what inventory we have left over. So yes, we have jackets, we have shoes, we have purses, we have a variety of inventory.
And it's all upper-level, expensive.
It's the nice stuff.
So are you, are you promoting only your products that you sell? Or are you saying, are you assisting with ideas and concepts that they can go and purchase things? Or are you just promoting items that you have on hand?
Well, I'm teaching the women, so when they come, it's a service. They really, a lot of women don't know how to dress. So a woman will come to me, and I'll say, you know, if you, if you wear your bra this way and you have it fitting this way, these items are going to look much better on you. So it's mostly teaching. I'm educating a woman on how to look beautiful with the right clothing. Now, we have clothing. They might find some pieces there and they buy them. That's great. But a lot of times, my clients over the years, with the information they gain, then they're able to go and shop elsewhere if they want. But it really is the service, and it's, sometimes we find a lot of things and sometimes we don't find a lot. And because our inventory is less now, there are times I won't be able to find a lot for a woman. But that's not as important as how I make her feel and how I empower this woman so she feels beautiful and confident. That's really the basis of the business. It really is about women's empowerment.
And a lot of our customers are repeat customers and/or referrals from other people who've come in.
Do you get into jewelry, makeup, and hair also?
No, we have some jewelry items, but we don't do the makeup and hair, no.
Do we have folks in the audience that would like to address this conditional use? You guys can sit down. You guys can sit down in the front there if you want to while they're, yeah, if you're not feeling well. Hi, can you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Pat Hammond. I live at 401-7 Meadowlark Circle, directly across the street from them. The first thing, if I could just point out, in the letter that we received about this, the ordinance number was incorrect. So I spent a lot of time digging around through the ordinances, learning way more than I wanted to. It should be 15-15-11. 15-14-11 was about some other thing way north of, anyway. So my husband and I had some questions, and we just walked across the street and actually asked our neighbors to explain to us what the thing was. We had a concern about parking in the cul-de-sac after a couple of events that happened. Parking in front of the mailboxes and this sort of thing. We understand that those events were just to get to know people. One was at the request of the Chamber, the other was just to get to know people, and that they're pretty much done with those. And so we understand that, so that's not a problem. We also had a question about, is this really an individual thing? And yes, we were assured it's an individual thing. So when they come and they park in the driveway, we really have no idea that there's anybody there. So it is not a bother to us that way. Speaking for my husband, which is not a new thing for me. We, after visiting with our neighbors, we understand what they want to do. We understand that they're also retired and in the process of retiring and working their way out of this. So as neighbors directly across the street, we have no objection to this at all.
Others that would like to address the commission? Anybody else out there? What other questions do we have of the applicant?
So I'm just curious, is there, how does the business work? Is there a charge for a session when someone comes, per se? And then also for whatever items they might pick out, or?
Yeah, I was the one who came up with the business model. So it was a little difficult to do that, charging per hour. So what we did was we gave that away for free. So there is no charge per hour because, you know, someone could come in and get five items, and they get charged the same as someone who came in and get 15 because they were both there for two hours. So we kind of do it on a, on a per-item basis. So it's, it's a service, but the way we charge is based on what they get. We just thought that was the more fair way of doing it.
One thing, I don't know if it's called the slogan, but it's kind of the way we run the company. It's based on spiritual law. We believe our greatest currency is our ability to impact others and the world around us, which is why we don't charge a fee. This is really important to us, just so we can be of service to others. That's always been our philosophy with the company.
Did you have something, sir, you'd like, we've got somebody coming up? Yeah, if you could just give us your name and address, please?
Paul Rooney of 408 Meadowlark Circle. Question I have is, do you have a timeframe as to when you're going to wind things down? Is there a theory on that?
Yes, you'd like to do it tomorrow. Yeah, I think we have about, oh, sorry. Yeah, I think we have about a year to two years' worth of items. It obviously depends on how many people come, right? Get five people per quarter, be a year, two years.
I'm not so young anymore.
Are there certain hours of the day or days of the week that you?
Yeah, she prefers, she prefers like 10:00 in the morning.
Would you be okay if, if we put conditions on it? I want to make sure if we put conditions on it, there are conditions that you'd still be able to function under. I don't want to put conditions under it, and then you say, well, it can't work, so.
No, I understand.
If we put conditions on it, only parking in your parking lot, your driveway?
Right, driveway, yeah.
Making sure you're not blocking the sidewalk?
Right.
Hours before 6:00 PM?
Oh, yeah.
That way it doesn't interfere with other people when they get home?
Right.
You know, so, things like that, that does not bother you?
No, no. So it usually goes from like 10:00 to 2:00 at the most, right? At that point, she gets tired, she can't really.
So, so this board has struggled with some past requests that we've denied for retail.
Sure.
And I know you, you're providing a service, you're not charging for the service.
Yeah, we're not really a retail.
You're making your, you're making your income based on, on the sale of product. So it's, it's, I, I, yeah, it's, we're kind of a fine line between a service, a service and, and retail. The difficulty this board has had with retail is, is the volume of people and parking in a residential neighborhood.
Sure, sure.
So I, I understand your concept is different than a retail where people just walk in and purchase things and leave, and it's more of a service-oriented type of retail. Would you be comfortable with us putting a condition on the number of people that you would accept for an appointment at a time? Obviously, it's not going to be just one. It might be a mother and a daughter. It might be sisters. So I can, I can understand there might be more than one person. Would you be comfortable, and if so, what would a comfortable number be?
So it's very rare that there's more than one person. So she doesn't even allow a sister or a mother to come, right? Now, have we, have we not done that in the past? Yes, I can count on one hand how many times we've done that. So, because it's focused on that individual, right? That's what she's focused on. So if there's somebody else there, it becomes distracting, you know, who's a stylist, right? So, yeah, it's, it's a one individual. So if you wanted to put a restriction that it's only one person at a time, we're perfectly good with that.
And women ask all the time if they can come as a group, and that would be a big bad no. It's just, that's not what, that's not what the service is about. It's not retail store. You're not shopping, so we're fine with that.
I just, this is just me. It's not speaking on behalf of the board, but we had a similar, it's similar in that it was dealing with clothes out of the home. That's kind of the similarity at our last meeting, and we voted to deny that one. The concern there was that their business model was quite a bit different, and I couldn't see how that business model could work without affecting the neighbors with traffic. They have a two-car driveway. You have a four-car driveway. They're on a much different street. And they're, it would just, it would hard, it was hard for me to visualize how that could work with one person at a time, with one car, and the hours and things like that. So I'm just saying this so that people are listening and they're saying, well, you said one thing one time. You know, I'm not double-talking. You're two different situations, so.
Understood.
I, I would make a motion to approve it with the conditions that no more than two people at a time, only parking in your driveway?
Right.
Making sure, and this is on you guys being there, making sure that the sidewalk is not blocked?
Right.
Hours before 6:00 PM?
Right.
Are there any other conditions that the board wants in the motion?
Well, I guess one question I had was, and I'm not a voting member, but when we received this email, it talked about the party that you had. You don't intend to do those anymore?
We, no, we're done, totally done.
But those, those would be the conditions that I would, would have in my motion.
And we're willing to meet all those conditions.
This is Heidbrink. I was going to suggest the same conditions, no more than two people. I will second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor with some conditions. Paul, did you get all those conditions? Okay. Is there further discussion?
I remember also a, a home occupation request we had for a different product, but we turned it down because it was retail sales. And that person planned to have no more than one person at a time at his home. And that was just a pickup and delivery type thing. And we turned that one down. So if you think, you know, I'm thinking of parallels we've had in the past, and that one came to mind. So I'm not sure, you know, about if, if something like that came up again, then we have now set a precedent if we approve this.
I, I think that there's enough service to this aspect. It's not a, it's not a high-volume thing. And so I, I understand that. I think that that's probably a gray area. Are we crossing it or opening something up? That's certainly a legitimate discussion. I think there's enough service here from what they're providing. It's not as much of the retail on this, but I certainly understand your argument.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I said it because, for the record, so that when the public finds out the decision, you know, over coffee, people tend to make their opinions known pretty well. And I wanted to make sure that we addressed it in the meeting.
I think this is, this is a little bit different than a typical retail. People aren't coming here to, with the intent to purchase something. They're coming here for guidance and direction and advice. And if they buy something, great. I don't think they're being forced to buy anything. That's, I don't think that's why they're coming. So I think, even though they're not charging for the service, they're coming to the home for the service, which is, I think, different than just strictly retail where the intent is to, to arrive to purchase something with, with, you know, to come, browse items, and leave, you know? So it's, I think the fact that they're making their money on the product and not the service, but what they're providing is the service. I think there's a little bit difference here between, between the other situation.
So if I might ask a question, so if they come for the service and you don't have anything that works for them, they just walk away and there isn't a charge?
They walk away with a lot more knowledge, and they walk away with confidence. And we've had that happen, and that is, that's my job. That really is my job.
Just, just out of curiosity, do you use, like, any computer, say, well, you would look better in this kind of, and here's, look, I have this computer program would show you what that might look like on to you?
The computer is in her head.
I can't imagine how they even do that. Every woman is different. I've met over, I don't know, over 1,000 women. I've addressed two women the same, nor have I given them the same advice because every woman is different.
Sure.
All right, other comments? Otherwise, I'm going to call for the vote. Do we want to do a roll call on this one? No? All right, all in favor of approving the conditional use with the conditions that were listed? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yep, thank you very much.
Hope you feel, hope you feel better.
Yeah, I'm sorry I wasn't feeling better.
That's fine, no worries. All right, thank you. All right, we're moving on to item number seven, home occupational permit at West River Oak. And is someone here to speak to that? Okay, come on up. All right, just give us your name and address, please.
Brittany Russell, 120 West River Oak Court.
And tell us what you'd like to do, please.
I have in-home daycare.
How many kids?
Six, including my little one, roughly.
What ages?
My son is.
Wait, you mean, would you take babies?
No. I'm doing, I want to stay above one years old because I want to be outside a lot. I know that'll kind of restrict a little bit. But my son is one and a half, and then taking around there and up.
I see in your application, it says you do not have a fenced-in backyard. But when I drove past your house today, I see that there's a chain link on either side.
We got it installed.
So it's all the way around the yard, not just the two sides in the front?
Yep, yep.
That addressed my only question.
Other questions for Brittany?
Is there a dedicated area in the home for this, a basement area?
The basement. Yep, and then we have a walkout to go outside.
You, you are a brave woman, woman taking on six.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Tealie, I would move to approve this request.
Heidbrink, second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the home occupational permit. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming. Good luck.
Thank you.
So on the motion to, for the prior one, how, how do you want to detail that in the minutes as to? We have it on the recording, but how do we want to detail that in the minutes that we see it different than the other case?
I think the conditions can just be listed in the minutes. I think that's, that certainly would be, would help going back in the future.
Think that everybody thinks that that's adequate? Yeah?
Just a note on building permits. This year so far through the end of July, we were at 28 new single-family homes at this point. Last year we were at nine. Total for 2023 was right around 20. So we are, we are up from last year.
I have no comment on that, ma'am.
And I see, and I see permits were taken out for one, two, six apartment buildings, so they're gonna start on those now?
They already have.
Yep, foundations are in, they, those are the Velco apartments down in Aspen Ridge.
So they, do we, I mean, here we have single-family homes, 28, but do we have? I mean, you must keep statistics also about dwellings, like how many?
Apartment units?
Yeah, how many dwellings we gained over the course of?
At the end of the year, there'll be a year-to-date.
At the end of the year, yeah. Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else? All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
To a second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor? Post? All right. We are done much faster than last time. All right. Hallelujah.